I'll call to order a meeting of the Wilsonville City Council Work Session at 6:02 PM on February 6, 2023. And we'll start with an Economic Development Overview with Mr. Lorenzen.
Almost there. Ah, okay. Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. It's a pleasure to address you again, and a pleasure to address you for the first time, Councilors Dunwell and Barry. For the record, I am Matt Lorenzen, the city's Economic Development Manager. It's the start of a new year, and the council is headed into a goal-setting retreat soon, I understand. And so it seemed timely to talk a little bit about economic development sort of broadly, and also more specifically what the year ahead looks like for me, and what thoughts you may have to contribute this evening and as you head into that goal-setting retreat. So traditionally, economic development has been focused on three core areas and continues to be. Those areas are business recruitment, business retention and expansion, and workforce development. Recruitment is that piece that I think a lot of people think about when they think of economic development. It's the piece that oftentimes makes headlines. A couple of years ago, there was the Amazon HQ2 recruitment, for example, where they had solicited, you know, communities from across the country to present their best offer to attract the next Amazon headquarters to their particular city. And then the following was all very interesting as well, as communities did that and incentives were offered. And this recruitment piece gets a lot of attention, but I will argue tonight that it may not be the most important part of economic development, especially here in Wilsonville. Retention and expansion is that piece where we strive to know our local businesses and to help them to grow in place and to scale and meet those goals that they have by making connections and connecting them to the resources that they need. And then workforce development is the, as opposed to the employer side of economic development, is the employee side. We're active in this space, but with limited resources, and I'll touch on this again in a moment. We're more of a convener and a conduit in this space rather than actively working in workforce development. You notice that there's three here, but a four-legged stool. And so the fourth piece here that has been added in more recent years is tourism development. Traditionally, economic development is focused on trying to grow businesses that are selling goods into other markets, because this is introducing dollars from outside the community into the community and growing the economy. Tourism, although it's bringing people to the community and so therefore not exporting anything, it's importing wallets into the community, and so in the same regard, bringing outside dollars into the local economy. All of this has been done historically primarily independent from larger community development efforts. And by that, I mean infrastructure development, planning and zoning, those things that are also taking place within community development here in Wilsonville. I don't mean to say that this has been the case in Wilsonville. I'm talking more broadly about across the country. So this old sort of paradigm of economic development, I'm calling it here the 20th century model, characterized by some of the things you see on the screen here. So largely government-driven, when I say shotgun recruitment, that is to say, there's not a whole lot of targeting of specific industries or trying to grow a specific sector of the economy, but just jobs, jobs, jobs. And it's all about headlines and jobs. Low-cost positioning, you know, this is a cheap place to do business, cheap labor. Chasing that thing that you don't have, trying to recruit, as it says at the bottom, that one big thing, the big factory that's going to save the town, for example, is kind of the sort of cliche example. It's very transactional, and as I mentioned, oftentimes focused on those headline-worthy metrics. A newer and what I would argue is a better model, and which we strive for here, looks different. It's focused on appropriate public and private partnerships. Rather than a shotgun approach to recruitment, we're looking at specific industries that have high impact and bring the types of jobs and the types of development that are aligned with the city's goals and values. It's a high-value proposition rather than that low-cost proposition. So in other words, we may not be the cheapest place to go, but we're okay with that because we offer a high value for both residents to live here and businesses to do business here. We build upon the assets that we do have rather than chasing what we don't. We continue to believe that quality of life is critical. So again, it's not about chasing smokestacks anymore, it's about a new economy. It's driven by vision. The infrastructure isn't so much just roads and, you know, infrastructure services, although those are important, but people, and I'll come back to this point in a moment as well, place-making, are critical to this new model of economic development. And rather than chasing that one big thing, whether it's an arena or a convention center or the factory that's going to provide, you know, a thousand jobs, it's about incremental wins that come together over time and accumulate to make a big impact. Indeed, economic growth and economic development are quite different. So while growth is about growing the economy, growing the community in size, development is really about making this a better community and a better place to do business. So appropriately, in my view, economic development resides within the Community Development Department here in Wilsonville. Not the case in all places. What I focus on are these four Ps, as I'm calling them, programs, policies, partnerships, and projects, all that are aiming to accomplish the things that we saw on the previous screens. So a good chunk of my time does go toward fostering and building these partnerships. And so on the screen, you see sort of an alphabet soup of organizations that often get called by just their, you know, their letters, CWP, Clackamas Workforce Partnership, OETA, and so on. But these are critical partnerships because, again, as a one-man band, a one-person band, we have to rely on folks that are doing boots-on-the-ground work in these very specific places. So Business Oregon has finance programs and grant programs that can help us to build the infrastructure that we need. The SBDC assists small businesses to grow in place and to be what they aim to be. The Mount Hood Economic Alliance provides a revolving loan fund for small businesses for job creation and investment in the community, and so on. These are important to us because absent these organizations and partnerships, we really don't have the resources alone here in Wilsonville to accomplish our economic development goals. Greater Portland Inc., I'll just note finally, is the regional economic development agency that focuses on that recruitment piece. So while I'm focusing on other areas, they're out there generating those leads of businesses that may be interested in locating in the Pacific Northwest or the Portland metro area. And then I have the opportunity to respond back and provide our value proposition and to invite those companies to locate in Wilsonville, where we have development areas that are well-suited to what they need. Policies, so I specifically don't work real actively in the policy space, but we have a Government Affairs Director here in Wilsonville, who you know well, Mark, and a team that works at the state and even federal level to implement policies that help us to achieve our goals. Here at the local level, I do work in the policy space. And in this new year, I anticipate pretty soon, we will be talking again about construction excise tax as a way to potentially facilitate the development of more affordable housing in the community, or housing affordability, said differently. We adopted an urban renewal strategic plan late last year, and we'll continue to implement that in the new year. And that's a policy document that sets the agenda for how we use urban renewal moving forward. We have code amendments to facilitate development as well that we're going to be looking at in Coffee Creek. So policy is an important piece of this puzzle. Programs, so those policies oftentimes create the programs that then I administer on a day-to-day basis. Wilsonville Investment Now is probably our flagship program, and I think you're all familiar with it. But again, this is an incentive program that offers a tax rebate when businesses that meet certain job creation and capital investment metrics, in addition to some other more peripheral items like diversity, equity, and inclusion criteria, they can receive a tax rebate when they choose to locate in Wilsonville in targeted areas. So Twist Bioscience was a 2020 project that was successful due to this program, and we hope that there will be more in the future. A vertical housing development zone we have now to facilitate multi-story mixed-use development in the town center and at the Villebois Piazza. This is also an incentive program. We have active communications and marketing going out there to sort of spread the word and evangelize for the Wilsonville community. And we're, again, looking at housing affordability programs and potentially, and Councilor Ockerwal leading the way here on the issue of childcare, which we discussed with the council recently as well. So all of these things that I just mentioned, I think they fit well into that category that I was describing in the new model of these incremental wins that accumulate to really make a big difference. So I don't mean to downplay any of them whatsoever, they're all critical. But as I sit and think about how we really move the needle, I don't mean chasing the one big thing, but what can we do that will really grow the economy and make it better and aligned with the city's goals and visions and adopted plan documents? This is where the project piece comes in. So it's my professional opinion that urban renewal is one of the most powerful economic development tools we have in the state of Oregon to use to really shape the economy and shape the community. And Wilsonville, of course, as you know, has been very successful in using this tool to that end. And I would just assert that we continue to use this tool in the ways that we have been using it. But then I would also argue that we might want to think outside the box and continue and use it in a new way, and I'll get there in just a moment. So infrastructure is critical. Coffee Creek is the focus area at the moment. We're going to be looking at a feasibility study to use urban renewal in town center, to bring the town center plan off the page and into reality, and in time in Basalt Creek as well. And infrastructure will be a critical component of using urban renewal in those areas. But this is where I would argue that we might use urban renewal in a new, more creative way. We talked about wanting to shape the economy and shape the community. Infrastructure and regulation, planning, visioning are all super important. But to be more proactive in this shaping, as I'm calling it, I think we can be more active in this space of site acquisition and aggregation of properties in order to target the specific types of development that we want to see in these critical areas. So I'm going to offer a case study to sort of paint a picture, and then I hope we can have a discussion about everything I've presented here tonight. This is a Hillsborough project. It's an urban project, and so I contrast that with, for example, like an industrial type of application. But I think the principles apply in both situations. In this situation, the city of Hillsborough's Urban Renewal Agency acquired the former Thriftway Grocery Store and the ancillary retail that surrounds it and aggregated it into almost a four-acre site. They used urban renewal to remove the structures, to remediate any environmental hazards there, and then put out an RFP to the development community to solicit the exact type of development the community had envisioned in that area. Downtown Hillsborough, I should clarify. So this RFP that they issued was very clear about what they wanted to see there. So rather than getting an application from a developer and reacting to it and simply applying a regulation, they're proactively seeking out exactly what the community would like to see in that space. So you see the requirements that they've listed. And then they've also made some additional sort of nice-to-have type features as well. They'd like to see mixed-income housing, a grocer and retail, potentially a lodging component, and so on. They issued this and got several responses, and this is the successful response that you see here. This is, of course, an artist's rendering, this has not been constructed yet. But you can see the anchor, grocer, retail, you can see the mixed income and mixed-use housing with retail on the ground floor, food trucks, there's an active civic space, and so on. They're proactively controlling property in order to bring the development that they want into their community. So this is that public-private partnership piece that I was referring to previously. And even though this was an urban project I'm talking to you about, I think this same concept could potentially be applied in a place like Coffee Creek, where the progress has been not absent, but slower than anticipated. And one of the main obstacles is that site aggregation piece, where there are these splintered pieces of property that really need to be cobbled together over time into a sizable development site in order to attract either a speculative or a user-owner developer. Unfortunately, like a three-acre site is just not going to be attractive for that type of use. And so if one of those properties comes on market, it sells, but it just remains that three-acre site. But this is the city's opportunity to potentially interrupt that process, purchase and bank that property over time until it can be combined with others, and then turn back to private development for a real high-impact project. So these public-private partnerships, not only as seen in Hillsborough, but there are dozens of others that we could also talk about, they're proven. They put the city in the driver's seat, and they balance and distribute the risk and reward. This type of project that you saw in Hillsborough does not come for free. But many of the costs associated with acquiring a site and preparing it can be recouped when it's sold back to the private development community for. So the net cost is, I would say, acceptable. And then when you consider the long-term tax revenue that it generates to provide public services to the community, and then that unquantifiable community benefit that comes with getting a project that meets all the city's goals and aspirations, is also something that can't be overlooked. So altogether, these four Ps are what I work on and what I aim to work on in 2023 with a special focus on this last project aspect and trying to bring in public-private partnerships. So many Ps, that wasn't entirely intentional. So with that, I guess I would invite questions and conversation and anything you'd like to discuss here with the time remaining.
Councilor Lindvile?
Thank you, that was a great presentation. Do you know if something similar to this public-private partnership was or is in place in Sherwood, where that large development is that's on the corner of the Twelton Sherwood Highway? And it's not Graham's Ferry that goes down there, but it's close.
Big industrial?
Yeah, it's big industrial.
I don't know, I don't think so, but I don't know, we would need to look into that.
Yeah, it's acres.
Okay.
Large, yeah.
Many of the projects that get the most attention are, I guess, what I'm calling urban projects. The Pearl District, for example, was facilitated by what was then called the Portland Development Commission. And they did this on a serial basis, block after block, building after building in the Pearl District. But again, these same principles can be applied to an industrial situation as well.
Council, oh, Council. Councilor Dunwell?
Have you identified any areas besides Coffee Creek within Wilsonville that might be available for some, for this type of development?
Yeah, so finding willing sellers is the hard part. Yeah, so finding willing sellers is the hard part. In my, in my mind, it's a matter of having those conversations and identifying those folks. There are some willing sellers that may be waiting for the right terms, shall we say, in the Coffee Creek area in order to transact. And I would describe certain landowners in the Town Center in the same fashion.
Council President Ockerwal?
Yeah, I kind of wondered about Town Center as well. But I guess, I don't know how specific you want to get or just kind of this approach of the general concept, you know, in our discussion today. I appreciate the presentation. But if we were to get too specific, so you might want to say, hey, let's table it and, you know, we'll talk about it another time. How large of a parcel do you think we would need to aggregate in order for there to be traction in Coffee Creek? And I know that those lots are really fragmented, so how many lots would need to come together to create that block, I guess, of, of land?
Yeah, it, it depends. I think size is one way to measure, but configuration is also really critical. So 10 acres that's shaped really in a bizarre fashion might not be attractive, whereas a square-shaped 10-acre parcel would be fantastic.
Okay.
So unfortunately, the answer is it depends, but I think five to 10 acres is that, is that threshold. But certainly, things really become interesting at the 20-plus acre site size.
And that's for industrial. For a commercial office, that would be a different number.
Correct, yeah. Yeah, we're talking Coffee Creek right now, not Town Center.
So to get to that 20, and I know it's not like all of the lots are the same size, so it would depend on which, which lots we, you know, were to work with. Because I realize as that number increases of lots that would need to be put together, as that number increases, the waiting game may stretch out too, right? So, but like, what, what could we be looking at?
Yeah, so the, the banking strategy is sort of one approach. In, in, if we want, it's strange that we're taught, we're co-mingling urban and industrial here, but if we go back again to the Pearl District example, there wasn't a whole lot of site aggregation going on there, but purchasing property and programming it and just turning it back to private development with incentives offered as, as sort of the carrot for the, the private development community, which may not have wanted to touch that old environmentally hazardous, you know, site previously. So that's the other approach, is to not, there may not be aggregation involved at all. It might just be the city being a proactive purchaser, in some cases maybe even where it's required paying a premium. But then again, getting that ROI back in the long term, if that makes sense.
And you get it back because of the control you can exert over whatever development agreement. So you can, you can create the vision.
Sure.
Control the property.
Yeah, and I would call that probably the unquantifiable piece, but there's a quantifiable ROI in the form of the tax revenue as well. And so an example that I would provide would be, I don't want to diminish the importance of warehousing and distribution to the economy here. It's critical, and I don't suggest that we should do away with it entirely. But economic diversity is economic resiliency. And so instead of continuing to see property transact, to be built into an empty shell building that's going to just warehouse goods and distribute them, if the city were to purchase that property and program it and put it back to the community, we could target specifically Twist, not, excuse me, not Twist, but a bioscience company. Or right now, at the state legislature, everyone's talking about the semiconductor industry. But if we broaden that to just say high-tech manufacturing, where the job density, the wages, the capital investment is going to be much more attractive than just a shell warehousing building, and that's where the ROI comes in.
Okay.
And do you mean that, I mean, I think under what you're saying is also that without doing something and just letting nature take its course, those properties may transform into those other, various other uses, and then that opportunity to program them for bioscience might pass us by.
That's what I'm suggesting.
Right. And I had another, I don't think it's such an issue in, in this area, but when you were talking about remediation of, you know, a site that has some environmental hazards on it called brownfields and so forth, if the city, I mean, you, the city could, if that was necessary, go after some funding for that if they were the owner.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not aware of any critical sites in Wilsonville that are brownfields.
Not really a thing here.
Yes, but even in sites that have been traditionally used for agriculture, they still may require DEQ review or approval and maybe even modest cleanup if there were pesticides used on the site. So it's, it's possible, but I'm not aware of any critical sites in the city that are brownfields.
And what would mo, oh, sorry. What would motivate, how would the situation change? Whereas today, somebody is not so interested in selling, but tomorrow they might be interested in selling to a city?
Yeah, I mean, it's a fair question. I think it's, it's a question of terms. And, and the city being flexible to meet those terms, where perhaps a private developer might not have the desire or the patience to meet those terms, whatever they might be.
So as we get into our goal-setting process, which covers the next two years, what portion of this would, would you as the manager, the economic development manager and our community development leadership recommend as a component part of this that might go into goals?
Yeah, is it okay to get into goal-setting right now?
That was the whole reason for having this conversation.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, so we want to have smart goals, right, that are measurable and all the acronym that I can't remember right now because I'm in the hot seat. But I, I think at least giving staff sort of the go-ahead to be looking at sites and conversing with owners and evaluating where the opportunities may or may not be, and recognizing that as an appropriate and desired use of staff time would be a fantastic start. The Urban Renewal Strategic Plan already makes recommendations to work in this area, but I think it would be great to reinforce that as well.
So without getting to specific strategies, which we don't do in the goal-setting portion of it, am I hearing that, that we would be looking for opportunities to utilize urban renewal as a vehicle for economic, for site acquisition and aggregation, something along those lines?
Right. And so the Urban Renewal Strategic Plan, for example, recommends that we amend that plan with a minor amendment to just recognize this as a desired activity. If there, if there was an opportunity to acquire property, that would have to be identified as a specific project under the plan through an additional minor amendment, but that's all just getting into the weeds of urban renewal law. And then in Town Center, of course, we need an urban renewal area there to be established first before we can begin to work in that space.
The goal would be what she expressed. Specific action items would be something that staff would bring back to council to say, you heard what your goal is. This is how we think it could best be implemented.
Yes.
Right. I guess the, I guess what I'm asking is, in our, at our level, is it appropriate for us to have a goal to look for opportunities for site acquisition and aggregation?
Yeah, because it, it would fully implement that, that part of the Urban Renewal Strategic Plan, but it would make it express that it's not just a good idea. It's something council wants to see happen in the next two years.
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you for putting that clearly.
Do you have anything? One, I guess I just want to close this out by talking about, or just one more question about the Town Center area. Has that, I know I've, I'm interested, and I think I've heard others express interest, citizens, people who call, in really getting that started. So I, I am interested in, at our session, I think I'm hearing it here, but also supporting an idea of expressing some goals to activate and advance progress at Town Center.
That's great.
Councilor Dunwell?
I would love that.
I think from a citizen's standpoint, I understand the economic development element with Coffee Creek, but from a citizen's standpoint, Town Center has high visibility, high interest from our citizens. We hear from them on a regular basis of what they'd like to see the future of Town Center look like. So moving forward on that, I think would, would be a really, this would be an attractive time to really start seeing what we can do.
Yeah, and I appreciate that sentiment. I think one thing that I meant to say in my presentation that I neglected to say is that in that old model, the paradigm was sort of that people are chasing jobs. But in this new paradigm, it's that the place, the community and the value that it has is the anchor, and talent goes there, and the jobs follow the talent. So even though this is not job creation, it's place-making, which by extension is absolutely economic development.
Yeah, and I go back to the idea of the connective tissue. And I think about the generation that is just becoming citizens of Wilsonville and giving them something to say, this is our city. This is what brings in. I think that that was part of the whole vision of Town Center, was to move in that direction.
Thank you.
Thanks.
One more thing, and that is, I, this, I think you were on the tour of one of our large businesses here a few months ago, and one of the people on the tour asked the CEO what made them want to locate in Wilsonville. And the answer was, we have some executive housing to the north, and we have workforce housing to the south. And I really listened to that. And I think that we, that, so there's an example of a business that located here because they believed that their workforce at all levels would want to live here, and so this reinforces that even more.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. So speaking of housing, we'll now go to our Frog Pond East and South Master Plan Development Code with Mr. Polly.
Thank you, Dan Polly, Planning Manager. And I'll talk fast since there's a fair amount of detail to cover. And if there's any comments that we don't get to during this time, then I'd invite you to go ahead and feel free to give me a call or, or email me. Go ahead and start the show here.
And we have a detailed staff report. Thank you.
We are at the detailed part of this project. So as we get into kind of the nitty-gritty of how to implement this, we have some great visions and plans and goals laid out in the Frog Pond Master Plan, but as some of those are kind of novel, we got to figure out how to put them into the code and actually make them function on the ground. So this is really the first in a series of work sessions. You'll see my face on Frog Pond quite a bit this year as well, as you did last year. But this is a first package of amendments, try to break it down into bite-sized pieces as the best we can. So really covering four topics tonight, which a lot of these will serve as a foundation for future topics of, as we get into housing variety and things like that. So the sub-districts and that idea of sub-districts and some standards related to that, categories of housing unit types, multifamily design standards, and urban form standards, to really identify that type 1, type 2, type 3 urban form that we talked so much about last year. So as I step through these, again, I may not hit on all of these to be brief, but want to really hit as much as I can the why, the intent of each of these, what we're trying to do from the master plan, how we're doing it, what it actually looks like as it comes together, and really also want to report out what input we got from the Planning Commission as they, of course, had much more time and were able to delve into this in more detail. So let's start with a sub-district map. Sub-districts are, are the neighborhood within a neighborhood that are intended to be walkable areas that are cohesively designed. Really wanted to reflect the master plan with clarity and where the master gram were more kind of bubbles, to really put finite lines on these and often, and also put it in the code so there's one, one place to look for standards. Also have numbered them in order to better reference the different sub-districts for various standards. I'll be brief on this since not much controversy. PC fully supports, no questions. They, they understood the intent and I think it's ready to move forward. And I'll state here, if you really just want to talk about one of these alone, you know, interrupt me, but otherwise, I, I'm going to get through these really quick and we can go back to as needed. So connected to sub-districts, one way we're using that is to define minimum unit counts around the area. So minimum unit counts are needed to have some certainty for infrastructure, but also are part of the component to encourage housing variety, as each of these minimum numbers are assumed to include housing variety, and really you'd need some level of housing variety to hit these numbers. While there's a lot of other standards to get to the housing variety, this is part of the package. It's all in a table format by sub-district. Some, some sub-districts, though, have a lot of tax lots, so where that's the case, we actually break it up by tax lot. So if one tax lot transacts and is developed, there's certainty to how many units they need to come up with from that lot, or if they develop two, how many they need to. So that's all explained in there. The PC thought this all makes sense, that it's consistent with what they were thinking from the master plan, and like, and they particularly liked the clarity it provided for smaller, smaller parcels. For example, in Frog Pond West, sometimes on the smaller parcels, we end up doing this complicated math that we're trying to avoid with this level of detail in the code. Also tied to sub-districts are what we call green focal points. These are kind of the, the green neighborhood square for each of these individual sub-districts, really getting to that urban design. But also, council, a couple of years back, when we went through our residential standards, felt strongly about the amount of open space that we require in our neighborhoods, which we're aiming to meet here overall for Frog Pond as well. So we're looking, so the current standards for any residential development in Wilsonville is 25% of the developable land is open space, half of which, or 12.5%, is what we call usable programmed open space. So we, we looked at everything that's out there in terms of SROZ and the BPA easement, and then how much usable is left, and kind of broke that up by sub-district and put it into a table along with some direction of what, what are some of the intents and goals and locations desired? And that's what we ended up with. I will say the input we received from the Planning Commission is overall, they liked the approach. They did have some good feedback on making sure that all of these do connect to the broader trail network, that encourage a variety of experiences, so it's not just all like trees and benches, but there's a, a variety of different experiences throughout the neighborhood. And also to be more clear about if, you know, if 3/4 of an acre is required in a sub-district, can that be broken up into quarter-acre chunks, and might that work better? And so go back and kind of think through some of that more, which we plan to do. So now I'll jump to one, something that will be a key, we'll be referring back to this a lot in the coming months. This is the housing categories. So this is create categories as the foundation of the variety standards that the master plan plans on implementing out here. It really creates a table separating units into four categories, which are based on both built form as well as definite, how they're defined currently in city code as well as state statute. So the first category is multifamily units. That's our attached multifamily units, apartments. Category B is the attachmental housing, primarily townhouses, but also like duplexes, triplexes, and quadplexes. Category C- duplexes, triplexes and quadplexes. Category C, I would say ADUs and small detached units, so cottage clusters as well as other small units. And then category D is detached single family homes, the largest detached single family homes and similar types of units, which could be clustered housing and in some cases could even be multifamily units, but are all separate and on a common lot. So overall, the PC was supportive of this approach. They thought it was what they were envisioning from the master plan. There is this cutoff of 1,200 square feet between category C and D, and they wanted some more rationale and just making sure we double check that that's the right threshold between those two, which we have not done that. We've done some research, but no, nothing ready to report out, but we plan on bringing that back. Something that will be an ongoing topic and just, this one is really just introducing and getting some direction tonight, is where we're mixing this multifamily housing in here is needing clear and objective design standards for multifamily housing, as currently there's no citywide design standards specific to multifamily, which we do have for single family as well as middle housing. So the thought is to adapt middle housing standards where they work for multifamily. So a lot of standards that we'd have for plexes and townhouses would also work in terms of articulation of buildings and design elements for a multifamily The commission agreed with that. They also felt that they liked the approach of using what we have and not trying to, you know, being consistent, because that way if you have a townhouse building and an apartment building on a block, you're having similar design standards and some consistency of design. Some key policy questions that we talked about with Planning Commission is really review procedure. And I think as many, I know at least the mayor and many of you know, most of our planning commission served on DRB. And from their perspective, as did many of you, the DRB is not the right spot for review of architecture of multifamily buildings. And the commission supports moving away from it. They know that there's kind of expectations set by having a hearing that really aren't real because the city has to follow the clear and objective standards. They think there needs to be a continued effort to move the shift of public conversation from the review of individual construction projects to the process of coming up with the agreed upon standards and keeping the community informed of those standards. The commissioners weren't quite ready to just say, you know, go get a building permit for an apartment building, you know, explore, is there a class two where, you know, it's an administrative decision, but there's still notice. So we'll come back, kind of sort through that more. Working ideas is maybe if it's a small, of a certain size, that that may be same as multi, as middle housing, go through essentially a building permit. But if it's a larger, you know, maybe over 10 units or something where you're getting the larger building, then that would be a review that we would require public notice. But we'll bring that back as we, as we work through that. And interested in any input that the council has on that specific question. The other question really around this multifamily is if we're going to have these standards, does it make sense to have them citywide or only apply them to these two new neighborhoods? And the consensus around the table and staff feels the same way, that if we're going to come up with these design standards, it makes sense to use them citywide. It'd be the same intent. And it makes a lot of sense. So let me touch on this and then we can come back and discuss. So urban form standards. So these are the standards that we have these type one, type two, type three urban form, which is really what is mapped out in Frog Pond and how, and how does that come together? So really, we have numeric standards presented in table format to really articulate what the intent and our vision for each of those urban forms is and provide the clear guidance that's needed. There's a couple of different categories, I would say, as you seek to understand in this table of all these standards. So most of the standards in the table are typical residential standards that are essentially just copied from other zones that already exist in the city. For type one, copy, and where possible, actually copied from Frog Pond West. So type one, which doesn't really exist in Frog Pond West, we copied some components of the Villebois zoning standards as well as PDR 5, which was one of our denser planned development residential zones. But type two and type three urban forms are actually copied from Frog Pond West for the most part, in terms of things like setbacks, lot coverage, some of those typical standards. So having those in place, the project team then really looked at what other standards would really help define and shape the character of different urban forms. So we ended up with three of those. That includes maximum building width, which I'll get into here a bit, minimum distance between buildings, which has urban form, but also gets to that discussion at council we've had about usable side yards, and maximum front setbacks, which is a standard we've used in Villebois before to really make sure that there's a consistency of a look along different streets. So building width, here's just some quick examples of, these are both multifamily, but it definitely has a different feel if it's a block length building versus a smaller building that maybe there's two or three of them on a block with some separation in between. So that is definitely one thing that we, really makes a difference. So the idea is urban form one, you could have a block length building, but in urban form two or three, you'd be limited to your width. So you have kind of that desired. In urban form two, you'd have kind of that 120 feet. So, you know, like a townhouse, smaller townhouse type building or smaller apartment building. And then urban form type three, you'd end up with nothing bigger than like a large single, a large single family. When I say that, you know, like a street of dreams, a single family would be kind of the maximum that you'd be allowed in terms of width. And then the distance between buildings, really that consistency and having that light and air between buildings, but also helping ensure the usable yard space where there is space put between buildings. So I have examples to share, but we're low on time. I'm happy to get into that, but probably better, better time, better spent taking any comments and questions you have. And happy to go back to any of the slides as needed.
So you've covered your main areas?
That's all the areas.
Counselor Dunwell.
Thank you, Dan. That was an excellent presentation and there was, you provided us a lot of content to review too. If you can go back a slide to the Villebois, on the setback and on the photos for some of the standards for the building width, and you can see that the single family homes up in that upper right hand photo are quite close together. What I, I understand why you're using that as a comparative set of photos. Are you talking about using the same distance between the homes and following the Villebois model?
So in terms of the distance between homes, that is something we're still refining. It's something that having those, those small areas that aren't usable, that's something that we've heard clearly we don't want. And we, and those will be reflected in the standards.
I'm glad to hear that because one of the things that I, as comparing Frog Pond to Villebois, I would say that the one difference I noticed is Villebois has, was designed through the master plan for such a significant park going through the entire area. And I don't sense that when I'm in Frog Pond, even though there's interconnectivity between them. It's yet, it's similar yet different, if that makes any sense. So yeah, having that additional space, I think would be really helpful.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I didn't see this anyplace in here. And I, and I'm hoping that we've already taken care of this, but at one point we were talking about utilizing yards as a portion of the open space, private yards.
Yeah. So I mean, we had that discussion back, was it 2019, 2020? Pre pandemic, we'll say. And it was decided that, that was kind of averaged in, but the private yards would not count as open space.
Okay.
And so we're staying consistent with that decision that was made back in whenever that was.
Whenever it was.
A couple of years ago. It's not old, so.
Right. Yeah. Well, you know, as we age, our old, long-term memory kind of fades.
Council President Oquervall.
Thank you, sir.
I had a question.
There you go. I had a question about the cottage clusters, because I know, you know, we referred to it several, several times in the packet information. But like, for instance, let's say it's page 35 of our overall packet. It's table four that had the lot and structure standards, Frog Pond East and South. And it's kind of setting up these definitions for minimum lot size. And then it says, except for townhouses. And then we have minimum lot size for townhouses. So there's like this, this definition that's specific to the townhouses. And I wondered, will we need something like that for cottage clusters too? Because it's just kind of a different thing. Or I guess maybe I'm, I'm still stretching and understanding completely how the cottage clusters fit into all of this too. I noticed like, you know, in our packet, when there's the great pictures and examples of what multifamily could look like in all of the different types. And then what does, you know, the, what's our next one? The plexes and townhouses could look like in type one, type two, type three. And I was hopeful that we could get some examples of what cottage clusters might look like in type one, type two, type three, or where appropriate, just to better understand how that all fits in. And having those examples might bridge that. Wait, do we need specific definitions for, for the cottage clusters? But I'm just wanting to fill in some of the blanks on, on that type.
I might have to reach a little bit out of Wilsonville to get great examples on that, of course.
Right, right. But it's kind of, you know, I mean, this new thing that we're working with. And I, and I want to make sure that we're paving away where it is possible because we have it on our list of one of the expected, you know, housing types or products for this area. And so I want to make sure that we're actually setting up the rules and the expectations so that it can be realized too.
And there's some of the rules that are set under state statutes, such as specific setbacks. There's limits to what we can require setbacks for cottage clusters, which come from the state statute. And they're a little different than townhouses because, you know, they're all put on one parent lot. So kind of the site, you're not really, minimum lot size is not, you're really not trying to push what would otherwise be the minimum lot size. So you wouldn't really see that reflected otherwise.
But like percentage of lot coverage, that might feel different, right?
Yeah, percentage of lot coverage might be a little different. So, yeah.
Home builders, the Home Builders Association has some really good slides of the cottage clusters and in their middle housing presentation.
Yeah, I remember that.
Yeah, I know. We have an whole archive from that prior project. So I'll have to dig through that in more detail and see what I can find.
That'd be great. Thanks.
One, I guess one big question that I have is, what do you need from us at this point? And when will, what will be our next decision point?
Sure.
And what, what will we need to be prepared to decide?
So at this point, I kind of report out what the Planning Commission, if there's anything that you think staff and Planning Commission is just totally going the wrong direction, please let us know sooner than later. Other than that, really, we'll have, we'll build on this over the next few months and then we'll come back with a complete package kind of mid-year for adoption is what we're looking at. So we'll build on this. Some of this, particularly like the, the housing categories is foundational to variety standards that we'll talk about next time. But really just reporting out the detailed work that Planning Commission and staff has done and seeing if we're on the right track.
And we've made a note of Counselor Dunwell's comment about side yards and all that.
Yes.
Because that is also a concern that the mayor raised sometime back. And that was, go ahead.
That's integrated into the master plan and it's being tracked and.
We had it in, it's right in there. Thank you very much.
Yes.
And I had one more comment along the lines of the cottage clusters. And that is where there might be a design that you might find that would have cottages looking onto a shared space. For example, that their whole front, all of their number of yards could look in on a shared space. You see that sometimes. Could, and it's probably too early to ask this, but I'm kind of curious if that shared space could count toward the open space and could also feel like, and we do have some things a little bit like this in Villebois, but it kind of looks like it's the park for those houses looking out on it, but it's also a public park.
Yeah. So I mean, a couple of ways. I mean, they could count some of their, the green focal point could serve as that. But kind of the standards are somewhat conservative in the sense that they're assuming, you know, worst case scenario to make sure that we get that open space. But in a lot of these neighborhoods, we'll probably have more than the three quarter acre actual open space. So.
And I think, I think on a lot of those, they actually don't have backyard or much side yard, that all of that open space is given to a common area in the center.
Any more questions or comments for?
Yeah, my only question was also about the cottage cluster. And in my head, when I first heard the term, I was thinking like a mini planned unit development, kind of like that, where you could play a little bit more with the side yards and the boundaries so that you have that shared space. Is that what you're thinking?
Yeah.
Okay. Sounds like we have a lot of interest in the cottage clusters at our next meeting.
Yes. We'll bring back some more information.
Well, thank you very much. That, I will adjourn our work session at 6:59. And we will reconvene in our regular meeting. It is seven o'clock. Counsel, do you want to just go ahead? Do we need to do any AV change?
Need any special process over there? We're good. So she can just gavel us in? You can just gavel us in, ma'am.
Okay.
There we go.
I call to order a meeting of the Wilsonville City Council for Monday, February 6, 2023 at 7:00 PM. And I will start by asking our city recorder to call the roll.
Counselor Dunwell?
Here.
Counsel President Oquervall?
Here.
Counselor Berry?
Here.
Mayor Fitzgerald?
Here.
And Counselor Linville is present.
Yes. Thank you. Will you please join me and stand for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Counsel President Oquervall, may I have a motion to approve the following order of agenda?
Yes, Your Honor, I move to approve the following order of agenda.
Second?
I second it.
Motion has been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. The next meeting of our city council, I want everyone to know, is going to be Thursday, February 23 at 7:00 PM. We'll start out with an appointment on our, for two positions that are open on our boards and commissions. And I, the council has all had the opportunity to review the applications. We are honored to have more applications and interest than we have openings. The only downside to that is we can't seat everybody at once. But we, we look for those appointments later. At this point, I, I know that we have circulated those materials. I would like to ask for a motion from Counsel President Oquervall for the recommendations that I have provided.
Yes, thank you. I move to ratify the appointment of Alice Galloway Neely to the Development Review Board for a term beginning February 6, 2023, to December 31, 2024.
Is there a second?
I would like to second that.
Thank you. Motion's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes five zero.
And I also move to ratify the appointment of Janelle Reed. And I also move to ratify the appointment of Janelle Reed to the Kitakata Sisters City Advisory Board for a term beginning February sixth, two thousand twenty-three, to December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Motion's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Thank you. Seeing no discussion, I'll call for the vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. This is our first meeting in February, and I wanted to just talk about something we did discuss at our last meeting and recognize that February is Black History Month. There are a number of activities going on around the state and in this region to take advantage of. I know the Oregonian just published a number of activities, and we do have Black History Month noted and, and described on our brand-new cultural calendar that was presented by our Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee. And one thing I just wanted to say is this is an opportunity, when we look at these cultural activities, to invite councilors during their comments to maybe, if you have recently read a book or been to a cultural or art event related to one of these activities, you could bring it up. One thing that I was, I will just mention on Black History Month, I had really enjoyed, and I was just talking about it quite a bit, the audiobook by the actor Viola Davis about a year ago, and I just really enjoyed that. Did not watch the Grammys last night, but I got an email this morning from my sister saying that Viola Davis received yet another award for that book, and it's just a fantastic story of her life and positives, difficulties, and challenges, and ways that people in the community helped her to be a leader in our community. So that's just one that I wanted to share. Have a couple of points to bring up since our last meeting on January nineteenth. The first one is that today, the council has received a copy of a letter that came to us from Clackamas County, and I wanted to bring this up because I'm asking the council for their support of my recommendation that we write a letter of our opinion back to Clackamas County on this matter. And the letter is, is basically stating from the county commissioners to the co-chairs of the Joint Committee on Semiconductors in our legislature, and that is co-chairs Bynum and Solomon, and co-vice chairs Knop, Knop and Wallen, and members of the committee. The letter basically reads that, you know, in, out of respect for their request for land that could be considered for development of a chip factory, and the requirement is, it's a broad criteria between twenty and one thousand acres. We have discussed this at least, you know, a couple of times, if not more than that, with the county commission and individual county commissioners, and expressed our interest in helping to find acreage and continue with our success in developing industrial sites as we have in Wilsonville. At the same time, we've expressed our commitment to maintaining the valuable farmland that is adjoining Wilsonville, that we refer to as often French Prairie, south of, it's also described as south of the river, and we were quite surprised to see this letter that came out, that one of the areas that was suggested was unincorporated Clackamas County located south of Wilsonville and the Willamette River bordered by I-5 and on the west, Arnt Road on the south, Airport Road on the east, and Miley Road on the north. The site is comprised of approximately four hundred grows acres, shown on the reserves map below in, in green, as the letter reads, is, is called Clackamas County Rural Reserves South. They have also described an area in unincorporated Clackamas County described as south of Stafford Triangle and south of I, I-two-oh-five. And so considering our, our prior discussions about this, and our legislative agenda and our council goals, may I have a motion to work with staff to compose a letter to, to reconfirm our commitment?
Your Honor, I would like to move that, uh, your, under your signature, that we send a letter reaffirming our commit, to, to the committee chairs, reaffirming our position on the development of the property south of Miley Road.
Thank you, and I do want to ask for a clarification on that amendment. I think our letter should be to the county chairs, Clackamas County Commission, correct?
I think, I think that we should send the letter to the co-chairs.
Okay, go, go ahead, directly to the vote.
And copy the board of commissioners.
To, directly to the co-chairs of the Joint Committee on Semiconductor.
Yes, because that's who's making the decisions. And so the, the letter would be to clarify that, because this letter infers that they work with cities, we want to make it clear that our position hasn't changed on south of the river, and that we also have, equally are concerned about Stafford Triangle and the area that would come into our infrastructure kind of triangle, which is near Norwood. So I think, working with Mark, we can, we can figure out how to.
Making the best use of public resources.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second, yes.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded that I work with staff to compose this letter, is there any discussion?
Well, I, I just would like to make a comment, and that is that as I reviewed the draft letter from the Clackamas County Administrator Gary Schmidt, I was very disappointed that the first sentence of his letter indicates that he was writing the letter on behalf of Clackamas County and our city partners, when in fact, I don't believe that we would be considered partners in his proposal.
And it was made clear, I believe, last Friday by our Economic Development Director to county staff, that south of the river, our position has not changed.
And further, oh, go ahead.
And will that clarification be made clear?
Yes.
In the letter?
We will make it clear.
Okay.
And I'd like to also ask, I'm sure that we would do this, but clarifying the letter, that it is cities that develop infrastructure, and we have to find the funding and all the strategies, and, and we develop, you know, work in a methodical, logical manner, and not just get, get a direction from an outside.
Points that we have made ad nauseam, and that we will refresh and repackage, yes, we will do that.
Thank you. I'd like the letter to also note our, our good track record in developing industrial production, and some of the things that we, that we've already had that we'd like to continue in that way, but in, in the right way.
Yes.
So we've moved, the motion's been moved and seconded, I'm going to call for the vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Couple of other things on the mayor's report. Council President Oquervall and I attended a day-long event in Salem for cities arranged by the League of Oregon Cities, and it was called City Day at the Capitol. It was really a great day. We got to hear some, some really informative and dynamic talks from not only the governor, but other legislators and, and other leaders. We had an opportunity to meet with Representative Courtney Neron and Senator Aaron Woods, at which time we presented our Wilsonville's legislative and, our, our smart transit centers, our program's legislative agenda, and we lobbied all of our city councils' priority bills, as we discussed at the, at the last meeting. And we also had an opportunity, we were all doing different things, so we could meet with a lot of people, and I got, got to network with other mayors and city councilors, including the mayor of Salem, who's really doing some, some great work. We learned that Salem, I did not know this, but Salem has the second-highest rate of homelessness per population than any other place in the country. And there are some certain reasons for that, you know, they, they do have a lot of focus in that particular area in taking care of incarcerated adults, hospitals, state health systems, and, and a number of other things that convene there, and they also have a very high rate of homeless persons who are women. And the mayor and the city, they, they have really taken that on, it sounds like they are going to make some good progress. Well, so I attended the, last week I attended the Clackamas Cities Association Dinner in Oregon City, along with City Manager Brian Cosgrove and Assistant City Manager Gina Troha, who's here in the back of the room. And that dinner happens periodically in the different cities, and there were a number of mayors and city councilors and, and city managers there. We learned a lot about what Oregon City has been doing and got to hear from the other cities. We also toured their new public, or their, they call it the Oregon City Engineering and Operations Center. They had repurposed another building, and they were, really got a lot out of it, it was a huge old, huge former-use building, is I think a warehouse and distribution center, and they were really proud of, of what they got out of that for their city and solved a lot of other needs they had in public works. Last Friday, I believe it was, Thursday, or I think it was Friday, that we, that I met with city staff and our Metro Council Three representative, who is Representative Garrett Rosenthal, and he had requested the meeting in his work to review the regional transportation plan, which is underway, and it covers this whole region, and he, I really appreciated him taking the time to plan that meeting in advance and let us present all of our priorities, ask questions, and he was particularly interested in hearing about the legislative priorities for the city and for our smart transit center program, and also for our bills dealing with intergovernmental coordination and planning for the Aurora State Airport, as well as the proposal, the, we have a bill that we have proposed, which is to study extending the West commuter train from Wilsonville to Salem. And on that topic, our staff has really been out there working with the other cities, and we were able to talk to some of them at the City Day at the Capitol, and at this point, we have confirmation from the city councils of Aurora, Donald, Salem, and Woodburn to endorse that bill, which is to study extending West to Salem. And another meeting that happened last week, there were quite a few meetings really getting started here, was at, I think it was a two-and-a-half-hour meeting with mayors of Clackamas County and representatives of all the cities in Clackamas County and special districts regarding a number of topics around transportation, and we also recommended appointments to two regional bodies that will represent Wilsonville and these cities, known as the Region One Area Transportation, or Commission on Transportation, and the Regional Total Advisory Committee. Upcoming, Greater Portland Inc., which is a regional economic development group that we work with, is planning a best practices tour that would be hosting about one hundred regional businesses and government executives to tour some best practices area opportunities, and of course, you won't be surprised to know they're coming to Wilsonville.
Of course they are.
And also Hillsboro, Vancouver, Gresham, and Portland. But that is happening, I don't have the date of it listed in my notes here, but I think it is, is Matt still here?
I think it's fifteen, sixteen, seventeen.
It's the middle of February.
Yeah.
Fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen, thank you. I think that's all I have. We did our appointments to the boards and commissions, and that now brings us to the communications segment of our meeting, and we are going to hear first, we have two presentations for this segment of the agenda, one is on the city's new Behavioral Health Unit Mental Health Clinician, and then on the Beckman Road Corridor Project. So let's start with, I think it's Chief Werps to talk about and our new staff, so, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, it's good to see you. Chief Robert Werps here to talk to you about what you just said, to introduce our Behavioral Health Clinician. So tonight I've got the distinct pleasure of making that introduction, I'm very excited about it, it's long anticipated. She comes to us from Idaho, she has her Masters of Social Work, and from the University of Idaho, Utah before that, yes. And right now she's drinking from the proverbial fire hose of information, she's being a real champ about that, and I'll let her introduce herself further in just a moment. Also present tonight, Stacy England from our Behavioral Health Clackamas County Division, and she is the crisis program supervisor there. She's here tonight too to answer your questions and talk a little bit about this program. So making this all happen's been a collaboration between the City of Wilsonville, Clackamas County Behavioral Health, Clackamas County Sheriff's Office, and Wilsonville Police, so it's been great to work together to make this happen. I want to give a big thanks to some of the key players that helped make this happen, so City Manager Brian Cosgrove, thanks for your support here, Assistant City Manager Gina Troha helped out a lot with this, and then Stacy England, who's been an absolute joy to work with on this project, thank you. And then thank you all for your support of this program, of course. A very high percentage of calls that we go to have a mental health component that, that we deal with, and so we're really looking forward to working with Brendan, excited to have her on board to help us navigate those. So without further ado, I'm going to hand it over to Stacy and Brendan to talk about themselves and the program.
Thank you for having us here tonight and for giving me the opportunity to work in this position and also be here in Wilsonville with all of you tonight. I came from Utah, sorry about that correction.
Yeah.
No. Anyway, I, I'm really looking forward to the work here. I have several years of working in mental health crisis, trauma type of, type of work, and I was really excited about this opportunity and to see the foresight that the community had in working with law enforcement and supporting the community members who are experiencing crisis and mental health. From experience and years of working with people in crisis, there's so much richness and, and really progression and healing that can take place when somebody's there to offer that support, and also to provide support for law enforcement. I think it's really a great thing to see that we have mental health clinicians working with law enforcement, and I've been nothing but impressed by the caliber of officers that are working in our community and, and the work that they're trying to do to support our community, so I'm really happy to be part of that, to help take some of the burden off of them in supporting people who have various needs in mental health and crisis situations. So I want to thank you for that and for being able to be here and work in this community. I'm very excited. And.
Well, I'll just talk about some mechanics, so, you know, so we've contracted, you've contracted with Clackamas County Behavioral Health, so we provide Brenda's supervision, training, clinical consultation, all of that stuff, and we have loved, we're partnering with Chief Werps and the Wilsonville Police Department. Brenda's currently working nine-thirty, no, yeah, eleven AM to nine-thirty PM, Wednesday through Saturday, and as you, you always have access to the mobile crisis team twenty-four seven, which Brenda's really connected to, so if something extends beyond her workday, she's able to work with that team as well to get support on those off days, so. I'm just mostly here to field questions.
Well, welcome, Brenda, we're so glad to have you here, and it's been a long road, it's been a, a goal of, of the council to find someone of your caliber to fill this position. And Stacy, thank you for helping with this, and also Chief Werps and the team for getting, getting such a wonderful hire and bringing Brenda to work with us in Wilsonville. I see Councilor Dunwell has a comment?
I can't hold back, I have so much to say. As, both as a citizen of Wilsonville and a member of council, being able to meet someone at a moment that is not their best day is important. It's even more important when you have the ability to partner with. It's even more important when you have the ability to partner with a police department as excellent as Wilsonville's. And I want you to know that the support that you have from me and from, I'm sure, from the rest of the council, as you become a member of our community and see all the, you know, all of the really wonderful things that we have, and help make our community better too. It's a really exciting time. So thank you for joining us, and thank you for, both of you, for making sure she onboards and drinks from that fire hose and does everything else. So thank you.
Any other comments, councilors?
Just wanted to extend my welcome as well. I'm very happy to have you here. And I don't know, this, this may be a question for you, or maybe a question for Chief Werps as well, but what, what opportunities are we looking at to welcome or introduce you to the community in, like, community events or things like this? You know, where you can interact with our community members in a different setting in a, in a kind of collective gathering setting or something like that? Is that part of the plans?
So I've been meeting with different community partners already, like Heart of the City and the Food Kitchen, and Chief Werps took me around City Council, or, I mean, the city building, and as well as the library. And I, I don't have any issue, and I'm excited to go out and just meet people. I'm looking forward to building relationships and, you know, seeing where the gaps are and how we can work together. I have a lot of history working with community members and community partnerships and building programs. So I'm just kind of getting to know community members, seeing how, what they see the needs to be and what, what we can work on to strengthen what may be missing. So that's what I've kind of been doing. I don't know if there's something else that you would...
I'll add a little...
Yes, please.
Brenda also had an opportunity to go out to all of the housing, the mental health housing sites in the county with our Clackamas County person who does all that housing stuff. And so she visited a lot of those as well, and is starting to make connections with the staff onsite and the residents onsite. And I was just thinking, I forgot to mention, what does she do? So that's a piece of it. So she is responding to urgent crises as they occur that have a mental health component, and then doing follow-ups, so for like frequent callers to 911 and things like that with a mental health component. And then really building proactive relationships with those different housing sites. And we're also, I know she and Chief Werps have been talking a lot about training for like staff at the library, staff at the city buildings, and doing some de-escalation training. So she's kind of been kind of getting a feel for what those training needs are. And so we're like, kind of prioritize the crises and then building those relationships in the downtime.
Yeah. Excellent. Thank you. And did you, perhaps you mentioned and I missed it, but it sounds like you'll be very active in moving around the community, which is great, that's what we want. But you have an office or a, where, where do we find you?
I live at the station.
Okay.
And, yeah, just, you can email me, reach out, or if you want me to come and present or talk to some other group that you're specifically focused and concerned that there's a need, please reach out, and, and I'm happy to accommodate that need.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Thank you, and welcome.
Can I make, I also want to welcome you. We often, when, in our exuberance about telling our citizens about your arrival and your, we will probably get questions about, well, how do we get access to this person? This may be a question for Chief Werps as well as, sometimes our, sometimes it's a crisis that our police department, it's very obvious that this isn't appropriate interaction with our police department. Sometimes it's a citizen who says, "I'm really concerned about this person who seems to be having some difficulty." They're either on the street or on the sidewalk, or, but it's obvious that, or it's, in their opinion, might have some mental health component. So what shall we tell our citizens in terms of what's appropriate in terms of accessing this, this new service that we have?
Yeah, let me back up to the community contact part. You know, she's part of the team, and that's very important to me that we have that whole team approach to everything, which includes her being at coffee with a cop or other social events that, I think that's what you were asking about earlier. So yes, we plan to have her there and accessible to, for people to ask those type of questions and whatever else is on their mind. But as far as access goes, one of, one of my concerns coming into this, we're all very excited about the program, I am too, is just, it's one person, right? She can only do so much. She can't solve all of our problems. We have a lot, right? So I, I want to make sure I help manage that part of it. But, but really, when we have, the police have been handling those previously on our own, right? And the guys are good at it. They're good at de-escalation, they're good at recognizing when there's someone in crisis, all those things. So if there is someone that, you have a person has concerns about, whether they're in crisis or having some other sort of mental issue, you know, do what you've always done with her. If it's really significant and they're standing in the middle of the street, right, that's a 911 call. If it's a little bit less like, hey, somebody should check on that in due time because I've heard some things, that's more of a non-emergency thing at that time. So then they would call the non-emergency number, and that's how I'd recommend trying to get...
I know that some of, some of the recommendations have been for us to call Clackamas County. And so we have done that and interacted directly with the mental health services directly at the county.
Yeah, I think Stacy wants to talk about the crisis line.
Yeah, that's what I was going to add, the crisis line. And also 988 is a new resource that's answered by Lines for Life. And that's for if someone's having a mental health emergency and they want to talk to a mental health counselor, it goes to the National Suicide Hotline. But our Clackamas County Crisis Line also works 24 hours a day. And I would say that is for a situation that doesn't require law enforcement. So if you're just like, you know, you see someone on the street, you're kind of concerned about them, but say, nothing dangerous is happening, you know, then we can send a pair of counselors out to that scene to talk to that person without involving law enforcement. And so part of what our Mobile Crisis Team wants to do, and we work 24/7, is to provide mental health professionals to scenes that don't require law enforcement. And so we really see prioritizing Brenda's time to those calls that do go to non-emergency, to 911, where there's a safety component, where you need a more time-sensitive response. Our response, we try, but we're up on 82nd Avenue, so frankly, it's about a 40-minute drive down here. But some of those calls can come to us and, and we can manage without law enforcement. And so we do want to kind of, because she is one person, like protect her time and make sure she's getting to the calls that best support the police department and the city.
I will say your business card on the back had resources for every, I think, county service and maybe beyond. That might be good for us to get a copy of that business card for our elected officials and our key staff people. I just, you fit a lot on the back of that card, I will say.
We were really worried about the ability to read that card. But no one was willing to cut a resource.
Well, I appreciate that because I, I think we do really want to just clarify that this is, we're not intending for Brenda to be doing, you know, a business that is concerned because a person won't leave, or, you know, or is in and out, and in and out, and in and out, and that, I mean, you know, that kind of thing where it's not, where it's more appropriate to use the crisis line.
And I'll also, I was going to say, I'll also add that our team, Brenda's really connected to our Mobile Crisis Team, so if a call comes in through the mobile, through the crisis line or 988, that really is more of her response or needs a more immediate response. And we know it's a day she's working, we're going to call her first and say, hey, can you get on this? So...
And another thing to consider too is, I'm going to be assessing and kind of doing some data, you know, and through all of this, looking at data and just figuring out really how this program makes the most sense. And so I think we're kind of in a little bit of a place right now where we're all just excited and trying to figure this out. And I, I just hope with some patience, we'll all figure it out together and we'll see, oh, this, this is really maybe more pressing, we need a little bit more support here or here. So I hope that through this experiment, we could, you know, this beginning stage of experiment, we can figure out where the pieces are missing as well.
That makes a lot of sense, and...
The business card would be awesome for...
I have some, I'll make sure you all get one.
And I saw, I see that our communications manager is here, Bill Evans, and I expect we'll have an article about welcoming Brenda in...
Well now.
Well now. And emphasizing the crisis... The crisis line. Exactly, exactly. That would be the numbers, to help you be as effective as possible, so that, I really appreciate the way you described this and, and keep us informed, and we'll take your cue on that. Councilor Dunwell, did you have a comment?
I did, I actually had a follow-up question. So from a procedure standpoint, you're one person and you're the support at the county. Will you typically be accompanied by an officer, or will you call in an officer? Or do you, do you go out on your own? How, what's, I, I think of you as an individual, you're not, you're not badge, you're not, you know, not in uniform, and so it, it seems like it's a different experience. Could you explain that process?
Yeah, safety is always important, and if, if there's a safety component, and especially if it's somebody I haven't met with before, and maybe it makes sense to have an officer, for the most part, I believe that's how it would always play out. Maybe down the road when I get to know some individuals who are commonly calling, you know, I may be feeling a little bit more at ease to be able to, to meet with them. I think, we'll just take it case by case, but for the most part, officers are definitely going to be supporting me, and they're very, they've been amazing thus far, and so I'm really, so that probably will be the criteria. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll let you, you know, you're working till 9:30, maybe you...
Not today.
It's a lo, oh, good. Okay, we'll let you wrap up your evening. Thank you all for joining us here. And next on the agenda for the communications segment is the Beckman Road Corridor Project Update with Mr. Barrett. We've got a whole team.
Well, Mayor and Councilors, my name is Andrew Barrett. I'm a project manager for the Beckman Corridor Project. I thank you for the opportunity to present an update to this project. With me, we have the Tappanise Sun team. I'll let you guys introduce yourselves real quick here.
Yeah, well, my name is Ryan Solernagle. I'm the project manager for the Tappanise Sun Joint Venture.
Good evening, I'm Shane Malkowski, I'm the design build coordinator for the Tappanise Sun Joint Venture.
So a while ago, there was discussion about the project, as you guys probably remember, updating the, the council. And so we brought the design build team here, and we're going to go ahead and kind of run through some of the, let's see here, hold on, some of the, let me do this really quick, project updates. So, give me one second. Hopefully that's up. Got it. There we go. Okay. I'm going to try to be somewhat quick here, so... Okay, so as you guys probably all know, the Beckman Corridor Project is several large capital projects all rolled into one. There's a bridge, there's a sewer line, there's some culvert replacements, there's a roundabout and a temporary traffic signal. We're trying to combine all of these projects into one to help the city realize cost savings with design and construction, but also to minimize impacts to the, to the public. This project is needed because there's some safety issues with roadway that we're looking to correct. There's also, it's also going to provide some mobility improvements. It's going to build some key infrastructure in the area to support the existing community, but also future communities. And being, we brought the design team, and I'll turn the next slide over to Ryan.
Yeah, so earlier this year in summer, in June, Tappanise Sun was selected as a design build contractor. Since that time, we've been going out, we've been doing geotech exploration and surveying to start with the design efforts. Currently, we are still in process of design. All of the sub-projects that Andrew had mentioned are currently being worked on in different phases. So some of them are still in a conceptual phase, some are in 30% design, some are in 60% design, and one, the temp signal at 65th and Ellison is at 100% now. So as we continue through with design, we're anticipating to start construction here late spring on the sewer work, and that will continue on through the end of '24.
Through the design process, we have reached out extensively to try to gather as much public input and get feedback for the project to roll in the design process. Multiple attempts were made, as you can see on our list up there, but we did try to ensure that we were reaching out during normal business hours, after hours, and reaching out to different groups in the community to do our part to make sure we were reaching everyone. After we had done the outreach, which, I mean, there are portions that are still going, a lot of the feedback we've got is listed on this slide, which most of it is safety. It's safety, 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 with improvements to mobility through the area. There was a lot of interest in a roundabout in the area also being installed. And you can see on the slide we've got that we tried to achieve most of these targets through various design elements that were easy to implement because we worked early on to try to gather that, that outreach and that, that feedback. So the, some of the preliminary design concepts that we had now, we had to bring on the contractor early on because it's a complicated project. It's not an easy straightforward project. There were many options for us to select and to reach a lot of the project goals. We had to have them sitting with us at the table to help, help us provide real-time feedback to costs and constructibility items that will help the project be a success. One of the items to note, after a lot of back and forth, was a three-span, span bridge. There's three sections to the bridge with two sets of pilings, was going to be installed. And you can see the yellow line on the, the screen there is showing the existing ground. We're going to be 30 feet higher than the existing ground at the dip. And it's not shown on the slide, but we are essentially, I think, at the highest point, 70 feet above what's going to be the future existing ground, so... Let's see here. So listening to that public feedback and providing those safe modes of transportation, there's a section drawn here where we have a shared use path, but we also have on the other side the separated bike lanes, and we have sidewalks that will help provide mobility to other users besides just the, the motoring public. One of the items that came up was the city could save a lot of costs by shrinking the cross-section down through the bridge. We actually came up with some real-time numbers for what those, those costs would be. And here we actually ended up with separated bike lanes. We do, of course, have sidewalks, but just a narrow bridge section that still meets the project goals, but will end up saving a lot of costs on the project. And one item, I believe that was discussed last month or the, or in December, was the selection of a roundabout for this intersection at Canyon Creek and Beckman, Beckman Road. And the image we have actually is a, it's a little dated now. We've done some updates based on feedback from the, the contract and design team. But again, this was selected because we, because there are, it's safer and there are lower lifecycle costs. So for the, the length of what's expected for a roundabout, it's going to be more economical for the city in the long run. And I'm going to hand the... And I'm going to hand the next slide over to Ryan to talk about the road closure.
Yeah, so as Andrew had up on the slide with that bridge section, when we go to do that in construction through the dip area itself, we're going to need to do a full road closure on that. Currently, that is anticipated to occur late September this year for about 12, up to potentially 15 months. During that timeframe, we'll be going in, we'll be installing the bridge foundations. We have to build rather large embankments on either side because we're coming up to 20, 20 to 25 feet. During that time, also do the excavation and stream restoration component of the project. Working on that west road, we'll probably also be able to take part of the roundabout construction during that closure to take advantage of some of that sequencing between Canyon Creek and Sherman Drive being closed. And I have the next one. And as, you know, one of the first things that we started working on early on is the temporary traffic signal there at 65th and Ellicon. This will be used for the detour route during that closure. The temporary traffic signal did have some significant lead times on the components to build that. So those are already in process of procurement. So that way we can make sure we have this up and running in time to take that full road closure.
So there are some key milestones coming up that councils should be aware of. The first one is actually at the next council meeting. We are planning on moving forward with approval of GMP number one. GMP is guaranteed max price. It's the first contract acceptance of part of the work. And that will be, as Ryan mentioned, for the temporary signal. With that being said, we are also going to move forward with some property acquisition along the property to make sure we can build the road section that we believe is going to be the most advantageous to the city and the citizens. I've got a list of other milestones that are up on the screen, but there's going to be a series of GMPs, the guaranteed max price. The contract team has let us know that dividing the project into specific sections will end up saving the city money in the long run and also get us to done in the shortest window possible. So that's why we have four guaranteed max prices or, you know, contract agreements. So with that said, we believe we're still on schedule, or we are still on schedule for construction near the end of 2020, like December 2024. And I know I've gone kind of quick, and we do have the project team here, so I would love to open the floor to questions that anyone might have.
Any questions? Counselor Dunwell?
I do have a couple of questions. Just as a new member of council, my awareness of the Stafford Road detour, Stafford, Ellicon Road detour, the, the management that seems, just as someone who's driven it many times, will be a challenge. And during that time period, are there other messaging tactics or anything else that you're doing to encourage individuals that are taking Stafford Road to potentially not go through there? Is there, are there any publications or any information that you're spreading within the community and within, within that vehicle population? Because I know when I-5 gets backed up, everybody takes the back way if they don't take Boons. I'm just interested in how you're, how you're preparing for that.
Sure. We do have project message boards that will be up and posted. We also have, we will have detour routes that were, that are, be up. We do have routes that are published on our city website, or soon will be. And in addition to that, we have been pushing out a lot of information to the public. Every outreach event, we keep getting more and more people to sign up for the project to make sure that they are being informed as the project changes and progresses. But we will have signs up to help, help inform the traveling public essentially that there are other alternative routes besides Beckman, either down south through Wilsonville, on Wilsonville Road, or up to the north. So
Any other questions? Well, thank you for the update. I'm sure that we will be getting some questions, and we're going to be outfitted with these communication tools to give people the answers. And thank you very much. We've been waiting for this for a long time, and now it's really happening. Thank you. So that brings us to the citizen input and community announcements segment of our agenda. And this is an opportunity for visitors to address the city council on items not on the agenda. It's also a time to address items that are on the agenda, but are not scheduled for a public hearing. Staff and the city council will make every effort to respond to questions raised during citizens input before tonight's meeting ends, or as quickly as possible thereafter. Please limit your comments to three minutes. And do we have anyone on Zoom waiting to? Okay.
Speaker here for you. The other two are right here.
Okay.
I have these as well.
And are these related, all three of them?
These two are related.
And the subject on this one is?
It just says an input.
Okay. We have a new form. I just was looking at how it works. So, and do we have any, you said you don't have anyone on Zoom. So thank you. I will start with, we have a presentation or a citizen named Sean Leahy.
Leahy.
Leahy, would you like to present? And I have your address on file, your Wilsonville address already on file.
For the record, my name is Sean Leahy. My address is as it was written on my submitted speaker card. I'm here to ensure the council is aware of an offensive street name that was approved in the new Frog Pond Ridge development, and to seek approval for a reduced fee to have the street name changed. Members of the city council, my grandparents moved to Wilsonville in 1977, and my wife and I have lived here since 2013. We are currently in the early stages of building our forever home in Frog Pond Ridge. Our issue is with the street name that was somehow approved for the street we will be building on, Southwest Columbine Avenue. While I was told that Columbine is a type of flower and meets city naming policy, I don't think I'm alone in hearing that word and immediately recalling the tragic Columbine High School shooting, which left 13 dead and 20 more wounded. In fact, when Columbine is typed into Google, 13 of the first 14 results are related to this horrific event, and only one result is related to the flower. The fact that this name was approved is disappointing. However, when one considers this new street is located half a mile from Meridian Creek Middle School, one mile from Wilsonville High School, and mere blocks from the planned primary school at Frog Pond, it is outrageous and sickening. Sadly, we can't watch the news without learning of another mass shooting that took place somewhere in this country. We should not be forced to recall these horrific events every time we turn onto our street. I am confident Sandy Hook Loop or Pulse nightclub lane would not have been approved. I believe Southwest Columbine Avenue is similarly offensive and tasteless. I first raised my concern about this street name on November 17th, when I emailed the Wilsonville Planning Commission. It took two weeks before I received a response. However, I was told there is a process in place to have a street name changed. Over two months later, I finally received a cost breakdown for this process. I was told the sign replacement cost would be $35 per sign, very reasonable. However, I was told the request to modify conditions of approval application would cost an additional $3,887. Being asked to pay nearly $4,000 to change such an offensive street name was disheartening and insulting. I escalated my concern in an email that I sent to the entire city council, as well as the city manager, last Monday, January 30th. Unfortunately, I did not receive a response from anyone. Members of the city council, I felt raising this concern was a public service more than an individual complaint. I ask that you please take this concern to heart and consider waiving or significantly reducing the $3,887 application fee. My wife and I are the first to build on this new street. However, I suspect many parents, teachers, and other members of the Wilsonville community would share in our displeasure with the name for a street that is located less than a mile from three Wilsonville schools. I do have a list of potential replacement names that I'd be happy to follow up with, all of which meet the street naming policy. Thank you for your time and consideration. I look forward to working with the city to resolve this issue.
Well, thank you, Sean, for bringing that to our attention. I'm, I'm sorry, I just quickly searched my email, and for some reason, I'm not seeing it. So I'll ask for somebody to read.
Really? Okay, I can read forward.
I searched for your name, so I, I, you know, would love to see it.
Sure, yeah.
And so we'll find where that email is. And I, I'm sorry that that has been, that, for how, you know, your experience, how you describe your experience. And I'm, at the same time, want to say I'm glad you're looking forward to building that forever home.
Yeah, absolutely.
So this is a process I'm not familiar with. It's the first that I've heard of this that I'm aware of. And so what I'd like to do, what we usually do in these situations is where something new comes to us during the meeting, is take some time to, to research it, find out more about it, and ask the city manager to respond.
Great.
Okay.
Great. I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. So that brings us to the next community input, and that is, I will introduce members of the board of the Wilsonville Public Library Foundation, Bob Renfro and Megan Vidal, and they are speaking about their upcoming fundraising event. So please come to the various opportunities to speak.
And you already
Should I sit? Okay.
Okay.
No, I'm fine.
All right. Well, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and councilors. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. My name is Bob Renfro. I'm the current president of the Wilsonville Public Library Foundation. And with me tonight is Megan Vidal, who is also on the board with me. We also have the city library director, Shasta Sasser, who is present in the audience. And Megan's going to tell you about our upcoming fundraiser tonight. Before she does, I'm going to tell you a little bit about what the foundation does. As you know, the Wilsonville Public Library is awesome. And basically, the foundation just, what, what we do is just try to add a little to the awesomeness. And we do that in various ways, mainly by funding programs and services that are not part of the regular library budget. And some examples are Dolly Parton's Imagination Library, which you've probably all heard about, where kids receive a book in the mail once a month from birth through their fifth birthday. And that's free of charge to parents. And we think that really makes, prepares kids to be ready for kindergarten when they get there. And we currently have about 700 kids enrolled in that program. We also are doing little free libraries. You've probably seen those units popping up around town in various parks and communities in Wilsonville. And there's about 24 of those now, and about half of those are actually funded by foundation donors. We also, along with the Wilsonville Friends of the Library, help fund the summer reading program, which is really important for keeping our youth intellectually involved during the summers. And occasionally, we do some kind of one off things too. Recently, some examples of recent things we've done have been to fund a GeoCron, which is a map that is going, I think the city staff is currently installing. It's a big map that displays interactive satellite information. And we're also replacing the well-used microfilm reader with a new one, which is really important for the library's genealogy program. And we occasionally do things like refresh the toy collection for the children's room, which we just did too. And that's, those are just a few of the things that the foundation does. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Megan, let her tell you about our awesome fundraiser coming up.
Great. Thank you so much, Bob. And thank you to Shasta for your leadership. Thank you to the mayor and city councilors for letting us both be here tonight to talk about Stay at Home and Read. And I would especially like to thank the library patrons. More than 13,900 people checked out nearly 416,000 physical and digital items from our library in just one year. So that is truly outstanding and shows that our community really does love our library. And I'm just so excited to share with you about the Library Foundation's coziest event ever. Stay at Home and Read is February 16th through the 19th, and that's where people can curl up with a book and donate what they would have spent on a night out to the Library Foundation. And donations can be made on our website at WPLF.org or in our library. Thank you all so much for having us, and we're very happy to be here to talk about Stay at Home and Read.
Thank you.
Sure.
Does anybody have any questions or comments? Counselor Dunwell?
You saw me hitting my button. Thank you for the presentation. I have to say, embarrassingly so, I had only visited the library once, and it was the week before COVID.
Oh, my goodness.
And so I, my, the momentum stopped. And, but when I went through orientation prior to joining council, I got a tour and I, my husband and I, I now have a date night where we are going to go dinner-ish at the library because of the resources there. I was taken aback at the depth of the library, at the professionalism of their staff, but also the willingness to have the, in the Spanish language area and recognizing that, you know, we have a certain percentage of our community, I think it's over 14% right now, which is Hispanic, and being respectful of that and also be embracing that portion of our community. So thank you. I'm really excited because I'm going to be, I'm, I'm going to be hanging out at the library. I even bought some used books. So really excited.
Thank you so much. We also fund a bilingual outreach worker for the library as well. Yes.
Carolyn, Counselor Barry.
Well, thank you to both of you for taking your time and to Shasta for coming in front of the city council. I've heard a little bit about the Stay at Home and Read program. I've seen some of the flyers that you're posting around town and on social media, and I just really commend your efforts. I think it's really exciting. I think that the foundation probably hasn't had any real fundraising outreach events. And so this is probably like your first big one that you're starting up after COVID. So congratulations. I wish you lots of success.
Thanks. Yes, it's been over three years.
Well, I will add one more thing. I've been to some of the, when we, when we have like the Harvest Festival and various city events, you'll often see a table by the volunteers with the Wilsonville Public Library Foundation for various things we're doing, including the Dolly Parton Imagination Library, where they're talking to parents and saying, you know, is your child enrolled? Would you like to sign up? And they will get this free book. And the only disappointing part of that is almost every person they meet has already signed up. So they're always looking for new people. But the child get, and, and they do find them occasionally. So if anyone knows of a family with a child in Wilsonville who is between birth and age five, contact the Library Foundation, they can sign up. And one of the things people rave about there is that child is getting the mail addressed to them, and it's their own mail. And so that's really cool. And it's, we have Dolly Parton to thank for that, and, and many people in Wilsonville who've helped fund it. So Counselor Linville?
Thank you for the work that you're doing on behalf of the library. We really appreciate it. I just wanted to mention as well, although it's, it is on the, on the foundation website, I wanted to remind our public that the donations to the foundation count towards the Oregon Cultural Trust tax credit. So any money that is donated to the foundation, and then a like amount or similar amount donated to the Oregon Cultural Trust actually comes as a tax credit, not as a tax deduction. So, which is a great thing. So $1,000 to the foundation, $1,000 to the trust, and there goes a $1,000 credit towards your Oregon taxes. So very, very great job on behalf of the, the library. So thank you both. Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Thank you. That brings us to councilor comments, liaison reports, and meeting announcements, starting with Council President Aquavall.
Thank you. Since our last meeting, I attended, as Mayor Fitzgerald mentioned, the Day at the Capitol that was organized by the League of Oregon Cities, and just wanted to express appreciation to our state representative Neuron and state Senator Woods for meeting with us on that day. Also, during the programming at Salem, Oregon, I listened to a session presented by LOC staff about the required legal framework of camping in public places, as well as a session about economic development, which was helpful information. And it's always good, as the mayor mentioned, to have that opportunity to network with other cities and talk about programs and happenings in some of our neighbors' communities. I was able to tour our in-progress Public Works facility since our last meeting. Yes, it is exciting. It's, it really is. You know, at the point when I saw it, there weren't any walls up yet, which I understand is happening this month, later this month. But we saw the walls down. They just haven't been stood up yet. But you can kind of get a sense of how the space of the site and how it's going to come together, and the opportunities in there for the community meeting room, too, some of the conference rooms that's going to be part of that building. There's a nice courtyard space, which is, you know, I mean, right now, it's not a courtyard space yet, but you can see where it's going to be, that will be part of the stormwater treatment or process for that site as well. But it'll be a nice outdoor space, kind of tucked in there between the buildings. And you're able to start to envision what this will be. It will be a big, big change for Wilsonville compared to what we have now. And so I think it will serve our community for a long time going into the future. And it's exciting to think about what that means in our ability to do emergency response management, and also just care for the rest of the facilities and the assets that we have across the city, and do the type of work that we want to be doing. So that was great, and I appreciate staff, Martin Montalvo, for taking me out there and explaining everything that I was looking at as well. Last February 1st, I attended a regional water providers consortium meeting. And during that meeting, we meet three times a year. You know, some of the pieces were routine to our meetings, but kind of highlights was a new, there was a consortium equity commitment that was passed unanimously by the consortium or endorsed by the consortium, as well as some work looking at putting together the next five-year strategic plan for that group. So there's some brainstorming and just kind of digesting of information and idea generation that will be happening throughout this year as they put together a new five-year plan. And that was interesting and beneficial as well. So here's some of that dialogue. And that is it for me since our last meeting. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Linville.
Thank you, Your Honor. I attended the State of the Workforce Breakfast on the 25th of January, and actually, Mr. Lorenzen was there and sat at the table with me. It was a well-attended event and really great information about the status of the workforce in Oregon. And it would be interesting, I think, for us to have a shortened presentation, but with some of their data. And I think we could do that through the Clackamas Workforce Partnership, where they could bring some of that data to us and some of the slides. Very interesting, indicating who is employed, who's not employed, and the age groups and what industries. Also attended on the 1st of February with the rest of the council, the Wilsonville Budget Committee. I did want to mention that on Monday, the 13th, Monday, is it Monday, the 13th? Councilor Berry and I will be doing a presentation for the Charbonneau Women's Association, talking about Wilsonville now and in the future. And so we're in the process of making decisions about what we will talk about at that luncheon meeting, but we were, I was flattered that we were invited to come and speak to them. I am certain that there will be questions about tolling and about, especially since it's Charbonneau, there will be questions about the changes to the on-ramp, to the auxiliary lane northbound on I-5, because there have been several accidents that have occurred there since that diversion was done. My meeting with Dr. David Plotkin from Clackamas Community Colleges was moved, and I'll be touring our Clackamas Community College facility with him on the 10th. And then I will attend on the 15th, the GPI, the Greater Portland Inc. Best Practices at the Holiday Inn, and then also the Meet the Mayor's event that is happening through, sponsored by Greater Portland Inc. I did want to just mention that I was disappointed to hear that the Oregon Department of Aviation Board, which is a state agency, is not supportive of the legislation that councillor, or that Representative Courtney Neuron and Senator Aaron Woods has introduced as it relates to collaboration with the community in the, as it relates to Aurora Airport. And their comments were not to support that legislation. So I was disappointed because they are a state agency, and I think they should really be supportive of outreach to the community. And then I did want to mention, since the mayor asked about what we're reading and what we're looking at as it relates to Black History Month, I, if you go on Comcast and you speak into the remote and ask for free movies, you will see this month that there are a number of free movies that are celebrating Black History Month. And one of them that I have seen that I would particularly recommend is called Harriet, and it is the story of Harriet Tubman and the Underground Railroad. It's excellent film. And then I also read the Viola Davis book, Finding Me, and I just want to mention that on Audible, she narrates it herself.
That's what she won all the awards for, the Grammy.
And it is excellent to hear in her own voice the, her story. And similarly, Cecily Tyson has also done one that's called Just As I Am, and that is an excellent book as well. And then I have previously read The Immortal Life of Harriet Lacks, and that book is by Rebecca Skleat, and it is a, it is a story about a woman whose DNA actually contributed to years and years of cancer therapy without her permission. And that DNA is still alive today, and she's been dead for many, many years. No compensation to her family, and I think it's a reflection of her race and her status in the, in her community. So I've enjoyed a number of other books, and, but those are kind of some ones that I really have appreciated.
Thank you, Councilor Linville. And so I didn't give anybody notice on that idea, but we're getting it started. We can do it as the future celebrations come up. Councilor Berry.
Well, thank you. I'll probably be a lot more brief than the others who've already presented what they've been up to so far. So what I've been working on is being introduced and learning about the other committees that I'll be participating in. So on January 25th, I attended my first Tourism Promotion Committee, and I really enjoyed that, and they worked on, they're working on a new logo or visual. What do they call it, a visual?
Yeah. It's good.
Yeah. And so that's a really fun process, and I'm glad I was able to be part of it. The next day, I went down to Kaiser, and I attended the League of Oregon Cities Elected Officials Conference that was all day, and I enjoyed that. I learned a lot, and I also got to make some connections. I had previously met some city officials from Kaiser, so I got to reacquaint with them, and then also with the city of Salem. And the city of Salem city managers that I was talking with were really pleased with the presentation from, let's see, Mark Ottenhead on the new expansion of West, the West train.
Presentation to Kaiser City Council tonight.
Oh, very good.
Probably, well, he's probably done by now.
Well, I'm sure he'll do, you know, the same great job that he did for Salem. Salem was very impressed. Yeah. Let's see, then on February 4th, I sat in on the Metro C4 Committee as an alternative representative on the panel. And then, let's see, coming up is the Charbonneau presentation for the Women's Association with Joanne, so I'm really excited about that. We'll probably talk tomorrow to get our ideas a little bit more narrowed down. And then on February 15th, I'll attend the C4 Metro Subcommittee. That will be my second meeting with them. So I'm excited. I'm learning a lot. I'm on that learning curve.
Thank you. We're getting so much coverage out there. And now to hear from Councilor Dunwell.
Great, thank you. So I, as the representative on the Willamette Falls and Landing Heritage Area, I actually had a one-on-one with both Britta Mansfield, their executive director, and Russ Axelrod, the president of their board, which was then followed by attending the retreat on the 3rd of February, which was a shampoo at the visitor center. What a fantastic spot. And we actually, Mark Ottenhead, our Public and Government Affairs Director, also was in attendance. The discussion was about their go-forward planning. It was the first time they had met since COVID in person, so there was a lot of time of getting reacquainted. But there was also a significant amount of discussion of the language in any future legislation for a designation of the heritage area, board responsibilities and things like that. So they have a lot of work ahead of them, and as you all know, we do participate in that. And we will see, they're going to be planning monthly meetings going forward, two virtually, and then one every quarter in person. And then secondarily, upcoming on February 10th, this Friday, I'm going to be accompanying a member of the Wilsonville Police Department on-
Which role?
Friday night. So really energized about that is probably the best term to use. And that's also been followed by an invitation from Chief Werbs to attend the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office Citizens Academy in April. And that will also, that, it's three nights and then a full day Saturday, and it will be an overview of the sheriff's office's services and tours of all of their various facilities in Clackamas County. So really pleased that he invited me to be one of the, I think they have 15 individuals that are attending, so I will definitely report back on that also.
Wonderful. Well, thank you, everybody, for all the representation and reporting back, and I know we, the things that everybody talked about doing are things that we hear from as important things that our residents and businesses and citizens want to know about and know that we're involved and part of it. So thank you. That brings us to our consent agenda. If the city attorney would please read the agenda items.
Resolution number 2997, a resolution of the city of Wilsonville authorizing the city manager to enter into an amendment to the development agreement with Taylor Morrison Northwest LLC regarding the completion of improvements associated with Regional Park 5. Resolution number 3008, a resolution of the city of Wilsonville authorizing the city manager to execute a professional services agreement with Consoor North America, Inc., to provide engineering consulting services for the West Side Level B Reservoir and 24-Inch Transmission Main Project, capital improvement project number 1149. Resolution number 3018, a resolution of the city of Wilsonville authorizing the city manager to execute a professional services agreement with Century West Engineering for engineering consulting services for the 2023 Street Maintenance Project, capital improvement project number 4014. Resolution number 3038, a resolution of the city of Wilsonville authorizing the city manager to execute a goods and services agreement with Absco Solutions for the security and access controls for the Public Works Complex, CIP number 8113, and minutes of the July, or the January 19, 2023 city council meeting.
Thank you. Councilors, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as read?
I so move.
Motion's been moved. Do I have a second?
A second.
All in favor, or the, yeah, no need to discuss the consent agenda. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0, and I want to find out if we have any, anything from the city manager.
Just a reminder, if you haven't done the, I think it's the personality, whatever the-
Strengths.
Thank you.
Core strengths.
Is it, isn't it?
Core, core strengths.
Oh, you just got the link today?
Yes.
Okay. Well, please remember to do it, because it will be the lion's share of what we talk about Friday at our retreat. Other than that, thank you for, Councilor Aquavall, for that wonderful summary of Martin Montalvo's. It's there for all of you if you want it, and he-
The tour?
Yeah, and it's really informative, because it really does show you how that site's going to be used for the long term, so.
So if any of the councilors want to tour that, just contact-
Contact Alora or Martin directly, and they will work with your schedule to get you that tour. I would choose a sunny day, but-
And wear boots.
Wear boots.
Wear boots, and they will provide you a hard hat and a vest. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any legal business?
Nightmare.
Meeting adjourned, 8:21 PM.
Goodbye.